I have your attention please. I have your attention please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
We have your attention please. We have your attention please.
All right, all right, all right. Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, boys, girls. Thank you for being here tonight. We are very glad to have you with us. And I think if we waited another minute or two, we could fill up this room. But we're doing pretty good. I really, really appreciate you guys being here tonight to help us with our pledge. And let me welcome you to the Burke County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Monday, November 17th at 6:00 p.m. Madam Clerk, all commissioners are present, along with our county manager, county attorney, finance officers over there. She's got a bad color on, but she's over there. Let me remind you to silence your mobile devices. If you're going to be staying with us a while, check your telephones, be sure they're on vibrate so that it won't interrupt our meeting tonight. If you come to speak to us right in front of me there at the podium, please be sure to press the button on the right. Red light will come on, we'll be able to hear you make your presentations. We are glad tonight to have Keith Barnett with Bridge Worship Center Ministries. Keith, are you in here somewhere? There he is, okay. We're going to have our invocation, and he's going to lead us in just a moment. And then we're going to have our pledge of allegiance, and that's going to be led tonight by all these boys and girls that you see out here around us in front. And let me just remind you, the flag is right here behind me on my right, so we'll turn and face the flag when we get ready to do that. And we will follow your leadership with the pledge right after we have our prayer. So, and also then after the pledge, our athletic director Wes Hassan's going to make some introductions and tell us who all we've got here with us tonight. And so that's going to be great. So let's all stand together if you're able, and Brother Keith, you lead us in our invocation.
Lord, we just thank you tonight for the opportunity, that, Lord, that we can come into you and call upon your name tonight, that God to bless our city, bless our county, everyone that's in here, from the children up, God, we ask you to just bless them, keep them protected, and keep your hand upon them, God. Lead and guide them and make them great leaders for our county and our state, even our country that can come out of this place, God. Lord, we thank you for your handed provision, we thank you for your wisdom, we thank you for your knowledge. We ask you to impart it into our leaders tonight, that, God, that they can make their rightful decisions, Lord, and a blessed one and a prosperous one for our county, our children, our places that are in need. And, God, we thank you, and we'll praise you, and we'll testify to your name in Jesus' name, amen.
Let's turn and face the flag.
Let's turn and face the flag. On the United States of America, and to the body of this land, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Tell us, tell us. Tell us who you got here tonight, and we're going to come down and make your convictions.
All right, guys, I want to thank the commission, county manager, for having us tonight, Kat Wright and Kay Drone, for all their efforts in getting this set up. While I've got the opportunity, real quick, while everybody's in here, I want to thank our county rec staff, our coordinators, coaches, parents, guardians, officials, every single volunteer that puts in a lot of time and effort and commitment to make these programs available to the youth in Burke County. And without you guys, this wouldn't be possible. You guys make it easy for me, so thank you. Now, with that said, we're going to recognize our three teams that we have here tonight. In the middle, we got the five through seven-year-old age group Valdez Tigers, and they are regular season Burke County champions as well as playoff champions, finished the season nine and oh. And over here on this side, we've got our eight and nine-year-old division, regular season champion and playoff champion, Valdez Tigers. They finished, they finished eleven and oh. And over here on this side, we've got the ten, eleven, and twelve-year-old age group, regular season champions and playoff champion, East Burke Royals, finished eleven and oh. All right, so now what we're going to do is, we're going to try to get a photo of each team. So we're going to start with the five through seven Valdez Tigers here in the middle first. So guys, step this way just a little bit, and then... All right, thank you, guys, the five through sevens. You guys can go out this way right here. I'll have y'all step in next.
Thank you, guys, congratulations.
Come on in, guys.
Congratulations.
Okay, stay there, hang on. Do you care, just scoot over just an inch, sorry. All right, everybody look at me. Sorry, I think.
All right, while those guys are filing out, we'll go ahead and try to continue our meeting. Gentlemen, you have the agenda in front of you. You've had it for several days. We did add one decision, item number three, appointments to the tax reeval board, you've had a chance to look at that. So, gentlemen, with that addition, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended with the addition of decision item number three, appointments to the tax reevaluation task force.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All those in favor, signify the uplift of the hand. Four to zero, thank you very much. Five to zero. Yeah, five to zero. I don't know how I could get confused. All right, gentlemen, you've got approval of meeting minutes. Gentlemen, we had draft minutes for July 21, 2025 regular meeting, August 18, 2025 regular meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve these meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of July 21, 2025 regular, and August 18, 2025 regular meetings as written.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All those in favor, signify the uplift of the hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. All right. Brings us to our presentation agenda for tonight. We have several presentations tonight. First one comes from Burke County United Way, proclamation for Burke County Nonprofit Day. This will be presented by Abigail Taylor. Abigail, are you in here somewhere? No, that's not Abigail.
That's crooked.
We'll give just a minute, maybe Abigail has been tied up in the lobby. There she is, there she is. Thank you, Abigail.
There we go, all right. All right, my name is Abigail, I'm with Burke County United Way, and we are very excited to be accepting the proclamation for Nonprofit Day, or One Burke Gives Day. So nationally, the second Tuesday following Thanksgiving is Giving Tuesday, also worldwide. And in Burke County, we know it as One Burke Gives. The first Giving Day in 2020 was a response to COVID, which provided a safe and convenient way for donors to give and nonprofits to fundraise. And so One Burke Gives is a 24-hour Giving Day event hosted online at onberkgives.org. That's the number one, berkgives.org. Burke County United Way sponsors the online platform and allows any 501(c)(3) in Burke County to be able to fundraise. So this year, we are very excited, we have 39, we almost got to 40, we have 39 nonprofits joining us, and we're very excited. And in the past, we have, the past six years, we have been able to raise up to over $100,000 in one 24-hour period on that website, so we're hoping to pass that mark this year. And so we are just very grateful that all of our municipalities and also Burke County is willing to pronounce this day as One Burke Gives Giving Day. It's very supportive to nonprofits in our county, and I think recognizing it just helps get the word out and get our residents excited about giving to local nonprofits, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Abigail. Appreciate you being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, you have seen this proclamation in your package. We certainly encourage our folks to participate. It has been a wonderful addition to our Burke County United Way, and it's provided lots of help for our nonprofit agencies all throughout the county. So, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to approve this proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve proclamation number 2025-17.
All right, here we go. The motion from, excuse me, from Commissioner Burns, all those in favor, signify the uplift of the hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Abigail, thanks again for being here. Item number two on presentation agenda tonight comes from our county manager and foster care introduction. Mr. Manager, would you like to introduce Ms. Morton?
Yes, I sure will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just, again, continuing our efforts to highlight the importance of young people and children experiencing foster care in Burke County. Over the last six or seven months, you all have allowed really a highlight area on your agenda each month, and we've tried to explore all the different components, from the provider to staff, to, you know, a child that grew up in foster care. This recently, during, I think, week four of our Citizens Academy, foster care was one of the areas that we were highlighting and discussing, and one of our members at that time, Miss Beverly Morton, was, shared with the group that she had some of her experiences as a parent, and we had not yet looked through that lens. So we asked if she would be willing to come and share some of her experiences and through that perspective, and so grateful that she is willing to do that, so I would just briefly like to introduce her and let her, let her share. Thank you so much.
Evening, Beverly, thank you for being here.
Thank you for letting me come and speak and share and just tell you a little bit about what a wonderful opportunity I've had to have 31 children in our home that didn't belong to us but belonged to us and still will always hold a special place in our heart. We look at scripture as being our God in our lives and our home, and when I look at the greatest commandment, it is to love God, but the second one is to love your neighbor as yourself. And we've got a lot of children that need love, and we need to do our part to get out and to try to meet those needs of those children. And they need just a safe place to live. We need people that'll open up their homes to give them safety for that temporary time. They need a place where they can feel safe, where they can sleep, where they can eat, and they can be comforted, and just need to know that someone cares. Oftentimes, these children are just put in the back of a police car and carried to an office and stuck in a room, and right now, probably, you can tell us, Mr. Epley, do we have children in a room somewhere right now in our county that are sitting there in an office, and that's where they'll spend the night tonight? Because we don't have enough foster homes in our county to meet the needs. These children are looking for someone to love them, to give them that emotional support, to care for them, to show them that they, that you're there with them. The first three children weren't, we've had 14 in Burke County, the first three children weren't in Burke County, but Michael, Michelle, and Melissa, I'll never forget, we had them in our home for almost two years, and when I gave them up, it was just, it killed me. It was terrible. But when I didn't get to see them for six months, and then very end of that six months, or when I got to see them again, I walked in, and they were just all over me, "Miss Beverly, Miss Beverly," and they were just telling me stories. And their mom was a drug addict, but she became functioning, and we collaborated with her, she became functioning, and we followed them all the way through to adulthood, and today still, when something happens, do you know who they call? When they have a need, when they have something, they still call us mom and dad. We didn't get to finish raising them. They went back to their home. That's one of the hard parts, but you work, you collaborate with their parents, and you get their parents functioning so that they can do that. And that's a very important part, and I'm still a very big part of their lives and their children's lives in looking at that. They need to know that they can trust you and that you're going to be there to hear them and listen. You don't have to solve all their problems, that's not what your job is. You're there to listen and to love them, and you've got the support that you need with counselors and therapists, but they just need to know that someone cares, someone wants to hear what they have to say, and they need to have a safe place. One of the girls that we had here in Burke County, and I'm allowed to share her name, is Ashley. She was so frightened that someone would come in the house at night. If I was there, I could sleep in the floor in her room or sleep in the bed with her. She was 13, no, 14 at the time. And Ashley was so afraid that someone was going to come in at night, if I wasn't there, if it was just my husband, she was even more afraid. She would sleep on our washer and dryer with the door shut. That was her bed. You have to be adaptable, you've got to let them go. She was so frightened that she thought, "Nobody will look over the washer and dryer for me." And so she would hide, she would fix a bed, we would fix her up a little bed, if I had to go out for a meeting, and that's where she stayed until I got back, and she was closed in, where it was just a closed-in closet. We don't know what they're coming from, but they just need, you have to be adaptable, find what you need to help those children. Another one, I'll call him Timmy, he's not Timmy, but Timmy came to live with us at five years old, and he was so full of energy, you couldn't stop him. The first night he was in our home, we had a family dinner, and he jumped up in the middle of the table, just grabbing things and shoving it in his mouth, like, "Wait a minute, you can't do, he's about to sit," but he didn't know any better. He knew when you got food, you just grabbed and ate as much as you could. And while he lived with us, in the 10 months, he gained 27 pounds, I think it was, because he was so, no, it wasn't, it was 17 pounds, I'm sorry. He was so malnourished, and he chewed. Every week, I had to buy him new clothes because he chewed holes in his shirts. But he had to come to a safe place until we could get him to a good home. We kept him for those seven months. He chewed out of one baseball season, if you know how tough baseball gloves are, this kid could chew so much, he chewed up two baseball gloves in one season, just chewing the end of it while he was practicing at the games. Yes, you have little things like that that you have to deal with, but he was loved, and he came in wild and not knowing how, and he left knowing how to sit down and have a meal, knowing how to say, "May I be excused?" Knowing how to say, "Yes, ma'am," knowing what it was like to play in a sport. He'd never been on a team, never thought he'd ever be on a team, but where you're able to do those things and make a difference in these kids' lives. They don't want you to do everything for them, but they want you to teach them how to do things. Many of them don't know, and they just want you to guide them and to let them do that. And as I said, working with Laura and her three children, another set of children we worked with, Chris and Wes, two boys, one is now a radiologist, the other one unfortunately hasn't done as well, but he's still successful. We worked with their grandparents, their grandparents ended up getting custody of them, and we followed those boys all the way through college. So it's not just you're taking every child to keep, you're taking them to help make their lives better. I can tell you about some others. I can tell you that I got one little boy that I fell in love with, wanted to adopt him. He came in, and he was in our family, and he was such an avid part of our family, played football, did all the things that our other boys did, and he was removed from our home because an uncle took custody of him, and two years ago, he committed suicide. And, you know, you have those sad things, but you know what? He was loved, and he knew, he knew he was loved. He made some bad choices when he became an adult, and that young adult, you know, a lot of children have a hard time at that 18, 19-year-old age to move on, but we, we make a difference in their lives, and out of 31, that's the only one I've had that happen to. So, you know, you're taking a chance, and you're helping these kids, and he still left knowing he was loved. I'll never forget that smile. "Miss Beverly," and he would smile every time he ran into me and looking at that. They need empathy, they need someone to have empathy there for them, they need someone to encourage them to do better, encourage them, that they can't, you know, I tell them my story, I was a little girl that was least likely to succeed, and when people see me in my hometown now, they're like, "Who are you?" And I tell them who I am, and, you know, go to a high school reunion, it's fun to go in now because I was least likely to succeed, and I'm usually the one they ask to open in prayer now, and I, it's funny that they do that, and look, I say, "Look at me, if I can do it, anyone can do it." So they just need everyday people, they don't need someone special, they don't need anyone that's, that's has any special skills, they need someone that can love them and that can share with them. You've got to be very flexible with them, you've got to be willing to just, to engage with them on their level with what they need. That means sometimes sleeping on the floor, it means sometimes rocking them all night long, it means getting cursed out. My two-year-old Maddie that I ended up adopting, when I got her when she was two, she cursed me worse than anybody ever has, and I tell you, at least 100 times, she told me, "Burke County's coming to get you." That was her, what she had heard over and over, and so she'd get mad at me, and that's just what she would tell me over and over. Now you'll see her, she's, she's 20 now at this time. But one of the ways that you can help also is to support our foster families, provide meals for them. I can't tell you the time when I had to go to this counseling appointment with this child, this counseling appointment, I had to do something else, and then had to come home and cook. Just provide a meal for a foster family, once a month, I mean, that's just, you could do simple things to help our other foster families, and that might make more people want to do it if they know that the community is supporting them. You can also get certified to be a caregiver, to be a babysitter, babysit for them, let those foster parents go out to dinner once a month. There are things that you can do to help the foster system. You can run errands for that, that foster family, do things to help them, or provide, like, when you have extra expenses with my little Timmy, and you have to buy extra shirts and things, you know, provide things like that that those foster families need, but most of all, just love our kids and love their parents. Their parents are all trying to do their best. Yes, a lot of them have made a lot of bad choices, but if there's anyone in this room that hadn't made a bad choice, I'd like to meet you. I think we've all made bad choices, yours might not be as bad as theirs, but they need someone to love them and to help them, and I can tell you, reuniting those kids with those families hurts, but it's a wonderful thing too.
Thank you, Beverly. Wonderful job you're doing, appreciate what you're doing. Any questions or comments, Mr. Beverly?
Yeah, I'd like to comment. I just think that was a wonderful presentation, very moving. I know that I'm, I know that all the county commissioners are, are in agreement completely, I know our community is, for our kids, and it's a real charge, I believe, to our churches. We got 200 kids, and we got to be able to support these people in kind of way, you know, we can, as a team collectively, like I said, bring a meal, some kind of way, and I just, I think that we're going to be able to end all the kids in our county from not having some kind of hope or mentorship or love or somebody that can aid them, say, "Hey, the people in Burke County, they, that's the place to get raised," so we're going to take care of our ones that are out there, the fatherless and the wickedness.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else? Again, thank you, Beverly, appreciate you being here with us tonight, sharing, sharing your story. Item number three on presentations comes also from the county manager's office, recognition of graduating class of 2025 Citizens Academy, and this has been a wonderful new addition to our county work, and I think we have a number of folks here tonight, and I'm going to ask you to come forward, if you will, and, if you'll, guys, if you'll go down, we'll get a picture, and I'll call the names, you guys go ahead and step down and give, I think we've got, okay, all right. All right, Dave Bichler, Dave, you here tonight? Come on down. Susan Butterworth. Stephen Coller. Jay Leach. Beverly Morton. Karen Swain. Kim Van Sickle. Joseph Winkler. Did I miss anybody that maybe came in and we didn't catch? Because it's just had a few people here tonight, we may have missed somebody. Anybody that we didn't catch? Kim? Kim Falsy? Come on down. Yeah, had you checked, but I didn't, I missed the check mark. Anybody else we missed that was in our, in our first graduating class of Citizens Academy? All right.
Well, this has been a great experience, I'll tell you, all these guys were just having a great learning experience, and we really appreciate what you guys brought to this whole adventure, and we look forward to doing it again, so, thank you.
On three. One, two, three.
Again, I want to thank our county staff for all that they did to make those number of weeks possible. Took a lot of information, and I think, again, I think everybody appreciated learning a whole lot more about what goes on in Burke County. Presentation, item number four, comes from Emergency Management. This is presentation of lifesaver awards tonight. This will be presented by our Emergency Services Director, James Robinson. Evening, James.
Good evening, everybody, I appreciate it. Commissioner Burns, if you'll step down, and Deputy Director Hood, if you'll get items ready. This evening, tonight marks one full year of presenting lifesaver awards here in Burke County. We began this program in November of 2024, and since then, we've made it a priority every quarter to recognize the people who step forward and make a difference when it matters the most. November is a month of thankfulness and reflection, and tonight, I'm truly grateful, grateful for the individuals we will recognize, and grateful for many more whose actions never get called out in a ceremony such as this, but they still change the outcome for someone in their greatest moment of need. Because of people who are willing to step away from their for the individuals we will recognize and grateful for many more whose actions never get called out in a ceremony such as this, but they still change the outcome for someone in their greatest moment of need. Because of people who are willing to step away from their families to respond without hesitation and to put the needs of others first, countless loved ones have another chance, countless families have another day together. That is the best blessing for this community that we can provide. And that is why tonight, we honor you, not just for what you did, but for who you are. You're the reason that Burke County is stronger, safer, and better every single day. We show this slide every single time when we do our lifesaver award because of the value that we provide in every single one of the categories that are focus areas for this board of commissioners. It's very important for us that you realize what we do and where we do it. Every shift is run by a captain, it's got a lieutenant and a training sergeant, two field training officers that work to educate our staff to make sure that we're doing the right thing, day in and day out. A thousand people suffer sudden cardiac arrest every single day in this country. 10% of those live to be discharged from the hospital after treatment from EMS. Out of that 10%, only 7% leave with good functioning, no comorbidities, or no serious problems. Most cardiac arrests happen outside of the hospital setting and that's the reason why we get to celebrate when we have successful saves here. What makes that difference? Early 911 activation, CPR by first responders and by laypeople who make the decision. So often in emergency services, we're required to make decisions that impact patients without having a full picture of what's going on in front of us. Less often, we arrive to find someone with minimal or even no experience or formal training that has stepped in and is making a difference, guided often step by step by one of our 911 telecommunicators. Tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing three individuals that are outside of emergency services that stepped up and did exactly that. We also want to recognize the telecommunicators that coached them through those critical moments while first responders were en route, but they answered the call to support their community while EMS crews were en route to provide ALS care and ultimately transport to a hospital setting. What you'll hear tonight is a clear example of the entire chain of survival in action and it serves as a reminder that not all heroes wear capes. Some answer the phone, some respond from home or work, some arrive in a uniform, some are simply willing to act when it matters the most. Our first recognition this evening happened here at the Morganton Aquatic Center.
Is she present? Come on up, come on.
All right, this one here is really important to me. My sons were in swim and they never went to lifeguarding, but they had the opportunity. And I always wondered, like during the off time, who's really watching? Well, Ms. Gibby was standing guard. She was on the side of the pool watching as others were swimming and she noticed a gentleman who went into distress. He was in the deep end of the pool. He was much bigger than she is. Without hesitation, she jumped in and she assisted in removing him from the water. She got him to the side of the pool where she was placed in recovery position. Our 911 telecommunicators, again, repeating, make sure that his airway is open, make sure that he can breathe. Quick actions of Ms. Gibby are what prevented this gentleman from drowning. If she had not been there, he probably would have demised in that pool. It's important to also recognize that our call takers, Lauren Edwards and dispatchers Ross Callen and James Freeman, were on the other end of the phone when the call was made. Our EMS crew, Cam Harton and Kamani Money responded, along with our QRV, Jessica Buffington, and EM personnel, John Hood and Quinn Reese. I'd like for all of you to come forward. After you receive your presentation, if you'll stand on the left side next to Ms. Margaret. If you'll just slide right over here for a minute. Our second presentation is also a drowning, but I think this one really hits home, especially seeing the energy in the room tonight when it comes to children. I think it's every parent's worst nightmare to be working around the house and you realizing what feels like a split second, that my toddler is gone. Where did they go? You frantically search through the house and then you realize that your child has found the pool and your child has fallen in. I want to ask Mr. Reyes, come up. So when a family activated our 911 system and call taker Rebecca Shifflid answered the phone, she began instantly giving direction for CPR. Rebecca, if you want to come up, please. Mr. Reyes heard the commotion and what was going on and he's a neighbor, doesn't actually live in the house. Hearing everything that was going on, he ran over while nobody was doing CPR on this child who was laying there lifeless. Hearing the directions that were coming in from Rebecca and Megan Ward, he began doing the chest compressions. And thanks to his quick response, he was able to resuscitate this child and get his heart beating again while crew one was, with Michael Stacy and Josh Cardswell responded and our EM planner, Ms. Quinn Reese, who was in the area, also responded along with Drexel Fire Department. We've got two members of Drexel here, Chief Jonathan Wilkie and firefighter Jerry White. I'm happy to report that thanks to the swift actions of Mr. Reyes, as well as the first responders who responded and the crew that took care of this patient, he was able to go home with zero deficits and he is home today. How much happier a Thanksgiving can you have this year, well, knowing that you got your child back? This one's really amazing. When I had the opportunity, chief, would you like to step up as well? Iker Township's chief reached out to me and he said, James, we had a unique situation here and I'd like to make sure that we recognize a young man. So Joey, yeah, thank you. Casey was riding home after school and it's my understanding, because I wasn't there, but the chief relayed the information over to me. He was riding back and he was doing what kids do, looking out the window as he was riding in the backseat of the car. It's my understanding that he was riding with his father as they were traveling back home. And he said, Dad, you think we ought to stop and help that man? Nobody really paying attention, right? You're driving up the highway. Casey seen from a couple hundred yards away that there was an elderly gentleman whose lawnmower had rolled over on top of him and pinned him underneath it. Because he said, do you think we should help? The family immediately stopped the car. We activated the 911 system and they went and helped. Casey? Come on up. Iker Township firefighter Casey also responded, as well as crew four, which was Shannon Abraham and John Mooney, and our other QRV, which was Billy Stamen. Because of Casey, this gentleman was uninjured at the end of this event. What would have been catastrophic because he had no way of calling 911, no way of getting a lawnmower off from him, no way of getting help. Because of Casey's decision to speak up, a man gets to celebrate Thanksgiving again this year. Great job. On 10-1, 2025, Brendel Town Fire and Rescue was dispatched to an unconscious patient at a residence. The arriving units on scene assessed the patient, recognized that he was quickly going into a cardiac arrest situation. Immediately, they started CPR. They notified the communication system. Communications dispatched additional units requesting help, including our QRV and an ambulance that responded. After 20 minutes of CPR, the patient obtained ROS, which is a heartbeat again, which is an amazing feat. The patient was transported to Morganton for initial stabilization and then to Fry for further care. Our communication center that took the call was Kim Ledford. Kim, if you'll stand. Jenny and Audrey, if you'll come to the front as well. They spoke to family and they made sure crews had the correct directions to be able to get to the residence. First responders, Harry Britton, Cody Myers, Alan Johnson, and chief Steve Johnson also responded to the call. The EMS crew, Adam Rawls and Anna Bradshaw responded and Justin Taylor, who was off duty, heard the call go in. Responding as well, he responded to the, to the scene. Ronnie Taylor and Zach Williams responded as well, because 20 minutes is a long time for chest compressions. The story doesn't end there, it's got a unique twist. The transport to Morganton, the patient re-arrested, but was resuscitated again. Once at Morganton, he was stabilized and was going to be transported to Fry Hospital, except for the patient had a change of heart, literally. On the way to Fry, he cardiac arrested five additional times, resuscitated each time by the crew, who transported him from the home to the first hospital and then to the second hospital. Ultimately, he received a pacemaker and was discharged to home with minimal complications from this event. This is an example of why high-quality education, following protocols, makes a difference in what we do and we appreciate each of you. A little bit about Burke County statistics, I think it's important to know, when we came and we started making changes, our CPR success rate was less than 8%, which is kind of amazing. Today, our CPR rate is 28% with return of spontaneous circulation. We are super excited about that. The last presentation that I have, I believe they're working on a link for me. Here we go. Noah, I'm going to let you talk for just a minute and then I'll start filling in the gaps.
Can everybody hear me?
We can.
Awesome. So unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it there tonight. I'm actually out here in, in Montana on a hunting trip that we had planned for, over a year now. And on October the 12th, I was actually in Burke County at Swift Water Rescue Training at the Western Piedmont Fire School. And it was our last day of class. I was actually one of the victims for our rotations. I'd finished all my rotations for the morning and as I was the victim floating down the river, my classmates had done exactly as they're supposed to and grabbed me by my shoulder straps on my PFD while at some point during that time, my knife had come out of my sheath, my PFD, and it was on a little slinky lanyard, while the current stretched that slinky line. At this time, I had no, the knife was attached or, or out of my sheath. And whenever they took pressure off of the, the lanyard by pulling me into the raft, the knife slingshotted back towards my throat and it missed, it almost hit me midline in my, in my neck here and it cut the whole left side back here into my hairline. And it, I, I knew it was bad, I didn't know how bad it was actually at first, but I put my hand up there and I saw a tiny bit of blood and I put my hand back and I knew it didn't feel right and I looked at my instructor at the, Ethan Winkler, I'm not sure if he's there tonight or not. And I told him, I said, I need some help, my neck's really bad. And by that time, he could see the blood running out from underneath my hand. And he kind of took the reins from there and got me to the side of the river, held steady, constant, super hard pressure to control the bleeding as much as he could. And the rest of my classmates, I, I saw Casey getting a word earlier, he's just as much part of this as, as the other people in the class. And it was just amazing seeing everybody come together because without, without everybody coming together from the side of that river, they wouldn't have had a patient to work on with the EMS crew arriving. And with that being said, the EMS crew was, I don't even know an exact time from how far they were down the road, but they got there, I mean, lickety-split, things were going sideways, but tremendous care all the way around the board from the side of the river. EMS crew was great. I mean, two wonderful providers and a supervisor, I'm blanking on his name right now, I'm sorry. But they had blood on board luckily. They were able to give me a blood transfusion on the way to Burke County Hospital and get me there stable and give the doctors something to work with by the time they got there and for that, I'm super grateful. Like I said, I'm sitting here in Montana right now and it's emotional things and may not have been able to happen without everybody not missing a beat that day. So I'm forever thankful, forever in debt and hopefully I get to see everybody again
So we want to recognize Ethan Winkler, Thaddeus Reed, Faith Anderson, and Josh couldn't be with us this evening, he was the gentleman who brought the QRV, he was the supervisor on duty. Burke County is one of a small number of counties, as you can see, that is outlined up there in red, that has blood capabilities in the field. And because of the quick actions of Ethan, applying direct pressure, immediately calling for resources to come in, we appreciate the fact that Noah gets to be with us for this Thanksgiving and we have a positive outcome. Last but not least, we'd like to talk about some partnerships. Ava, Dr. Welch, if you'd like to come up, you're welcome to. So one of the things that we definitely like to showcase at the end, and I don't know why my slide's not advancing, at the end of our presentations on a quarterly basis is partnerships that we feel are extremely successful. And we chose for the, the last quarter of this year to talk about our partnership with Western Piedmont Community College. It's got a tremendous amount of benefit that we share with the response, with the education, and I'll let Ava speak to the further benefit that they get to provide for us.
So, yes, it is a very important partnership for a lot of reasons. Number one, in that we provide nationally-recognized education for all of our public safety units here in the county, so that's one of the benefits. But the best benefit and perhaps one of the ones that you guys like to hear most on is that it saves the county money. So when Burke EMS is able, or some of our other county agencies partner with the college to provide that nationally-recognized education, then at that point, the state reimburses the college for our tuition waivers that we provide those students. So all public safety students are fee exempt, fee waived, if you will, and so with that, the state reimburses the college for those classes for the tuition that would otherwise have been collected from either the county personnel or the county itself to provide that training. So quality education and then of course, that that's saving, you know, the Burke County taxpayers money on the back end of that. And then I would like to say that by subletting that training sometimes to the college, it's another set of eyes. You know, sometimes we hear that a lot of times in-house training, you know, it's more liability, not necessarily the in-house training is bad, I do think that that of course has a nice benefit as well. However, I will say that if you can provide that training at the college, then subletting that is also somewhat of a liability relief because then on, you know, our end, we're making sure that it's with those nice standards and everything that we've discussed. So in addition, I will say that we've helped Burke EMS get more staffed recently, so with that, we've, I think right now, when I spoke with Zach earlier, we had one paramedic position and then two where it could be EMT or paramedic, that's just today's numbers. But keeping them staffed, constantly collecting that feedback on how we can help improve the education. I will say that the relationship that we have and where they serve on our advisory committee, how can we continuously support you and that employees to make sure that they're trained to serve the community so that we get out here and we save lives, that they're doing the best that they can so that you hear these stories where people are going home to their families at Thanksgiving. That's what it's all about. It's about working together as community agencies to provide the best training so that we do help the city of Surintry of Burke County. And so I will say that this year... And so I will say that this year, we've had a lot of successes in that we've continued to run the academy that we started. With that, we've credentialed at least 16 paramedics. We've got three AEMTs who are credentialing, who just credentialed, and then three more who are getting ready to test for EMT along the way in our current academy. And then we have run many specialty classes for things such as EMS management, advanced care, EMS Wilderness Summit, and of course, anatomy and physiology. We've had about 114 students come through this year in our specialty classes. And then, of course, we also provide the training for the fire departments, so continuing education, training, CPR training. And so there's 289 responders in the county that we provide that kind of training for. In addition, we provide in-service. We've provided so far this year 52 classes for 1,120 students. And then we've also offered a hazmat course, advanced cardiac life support class, PALS training, and then six CPR classes. We have ran one emergency medical responder class, one EMR, which is the emergency medical responder to EMT class, and then of course, five EMT classes, two of which were partnerships with the North Carolina School for Science and Math, another great partnership locally, producing 21 students out of that with the partnership with math and science, and then 31 students between the other three classes that we ran a regular EMT. And then two AEMT classes, and then of course, our two paramedic classes. So you see that there's a lot of benefit in the partnership and the training that we do provide in continuing education and the initial training that enables us to do all of the wonderful things here in the county, like what you witnessed tonight with these testimonies. So I just appreciate the opportunity just to say thank you.
I'd like to invite all of our awardees back up for one quick picture altogether and with the commissioners, if possible.
Well, I don't think there's much more we could say there. I think the only word that I have for it is just simply wow. I've said it before, I'm a bit prejudiced, but I think we just absolutely have the very best right here in Burke County with emergency management and all the response. Let's give them one more hand. Well, it's kind of hard to go from life-saving to tax attorney. Okay, you guys have got a tough act to follow, but we are glad to have our tax attorneys with us tonight from the Kanye Law Firm. You guys come introduce yourselves, please, and give us a bit of a report on what you've been doing for us. Turn your mic on there, please, sir.
With all this civic engagement, it makes us wish we'd come to a different meeting. Taxes is nobody's favorite subject, but I'm Richard Kenya. I'm an attorney in Buncombe County. And with me this evening is Lauren Hubbard, my partner and attorney with our firm. Brian Epely asked us to speak briefly about our firm tonight, our role in assisting the county in tax collection, and some of the results that we've achieved over during our representation. Our firm works exclusively with county and municipal governments in the collection of property taxes, nuisance abatement lanes, abatement liens pursuant to the North Carolina Machinery Act, also known as Chapter 105 of the General Statutes. Since 2018, Lauren and I have worked with the Burke County Tax Office in the collection of delinquent accounts. Of course, taxes being used to fund schools, public safety, public works, human services, and the like. Our involvement in Burke County's collection program promotes other things, fairness. All property owners pay, not just owners who are compliant with paying their taxes. Thus far in our work with Buncombe County, with Burke County, we've been referred by the Burke County Tax Office 1,275 matters for collection. We've fully resolved and collected 1,166 of those referrals with 109 files currently in progress. In the same period, we've remitted taxes to Burke County just shy of $3 million, $2,965,487 and change. For calendar year 2024, this figure was $528,132. And for this current calendar year thus far, it's been $334,609. Our program has increased county revenue without increasing county expenses. I view our role as not punitive, but compliance-focused. It's, we have a professional approach, it's statutorily driven in accordance with the Machinery Act, and our participation actually results in more voluntary payments. We always send a demand letter to the taxpayer before starting any action. In order to give them notice, the taxes must be paid. That's not required by the Machinery Act, but we do it anyway because we want to explore with the taxpayer if there's some voluntary way to work out their delinquency. And it's only after we receive no response from taxpayer, usually a couple of months, that we'll move forward with legal action. But with the 1,166 files I referred to that we've closed, 724 of those files were closed with a demand letter only. No legal action was required. And another 137 were paid pursuant to repayment plan, that's about 11%. Repayment plans are currently authorized by the Burke County Tax Office as long as we complete the payments within a year. And we've had pretty good success at that. So for most of the files that are referred, we really operate as an extension of the tax office, not as an aggressive outside collector for most files. But consistent enforcement protects compliant taxpayers because without attorney involvement, delinquent owners, particularly repeat offenders or out-of-state owners, simply don't pay. And enforcement sometimes is, as a percentage, is more likely against taxpayers who are not in state or who've had a rareness that they've not paid in the past. Our goal, I think, to close, is simply to ensure fairness, recover revenue efficiently, and protect the county's interests professionally at no cost to the general fund. And we're here to support your staff and help the county maintain strong collection rates essential for your budget. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kanye. Gentlemen, any questions for our tax attorney tonight while he's here to provide us some information? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming tonight, sharing with us. Right, item number six on present.
I make a motion to accept it, as presented.
Mr. Stroud, I accept that motion. Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor signify with the uplifted hand. Five Zs, right in front of the man, Kirk. Thank you very much. Item number six, health presentation of the 2025 Community Health Assessment. This is going to be presented by Miranda Smith, our public health educator. Good evening.
Hi, good afternoon, or good evening, I guess. So I'm going to give a glimpse into our 2025 Burke County Community Health Assessment. If you've seen the document, you've seen there's quite a lot of data that's in there. So we just wanted to give a highlight of the overall health priorities and kind of the background, the process of how this is all put together. So a CHA, Community Health Assessment, a CHA, is in a three-year cycle within Burke County. Some counties do it on a five or four-year cycle, but we do every three years. It's required by the North Carolina Local Health Department Association accreditation. So every county in North Carolina has to have a health assessment. These health assessments go in that three-year cycle, and we partner with UNC Health Blue Ridge as nonprofit hospitals are also required to have a community health assessment per IRS. We use Burke Wellness Initiative, which is a community-based organization made of different people in the community with different health aspects. The school system is also part of that. They help guide and bring data back to the table, but also input from people that they deal with within our community of what they're seeing and what they're experiencing to help guide this process, but also help pick our priorities that you'll see later on. Our data collection began in April of 2024 and ended in June of 2024. Our primary data, which is the data we collected ourselves, was from a survey. It was sent out through Burke County residents. We called Burke County residents and was also promoted by our partners. And we also had secondary data where we collected it from things like the US Census. And there's also a North Carolina data portal that puts all this data from all over North Carolina and the nation together, so we were able to zone in on Burke County. We also collected data through focus groups. We had three focus groups where we realized we weren't really reaching our audience and our community members. That was with a cultural diversity focus group, individuals who are experiencing homelessness, and a faith-based focus group. Out of our survey, we had 492 Burke County residents complete that survey. I know it sounds like a small number, and our goal is to always increase that number. That's why presentations like this help to bring awareness of this health assessment. But the good news is that out of all the western counties of North Carolina, we had the third-most people who took that survey, and that's under Buncombe and Henderson County. And what that means is that we had the sample that was required to represent Burke County and Burke County demographics. So it breaks down, so although that's a small number, we actually did good when it comes across other western counties. And before I go in depth any further, when the actual health assessment is published, I really encourage you to look at that as there's more data and more information that can be helpful for people in our community and for grants and things like that. So moving on to our top three priorities. The first one is affordable housing and homelessness. It remains to be a rising issue in Burke County. We saw that there were 258 individuals, according to the point-in-time count for this year, that were experiencing homelessness. 73 students lacked stable, constant housing. And 33.7% of individuals who took our community survey said that they worried about paying their rent or mortgage, and that's up from 18% in our 2021 survey. Our next priority is substance use disorder. It's a known issue in Burke County, and it's been a health priority over our last four community health assessments that date back to 2013. Over 55.2% of individuals who took our survey said that their lives had been negatively impacted by substance use disorder, which was up from 39% in 2018. We also saw that adult drinking rates have risen to 46.2% in 2024, up from 40.9% in And our last priority is mental health. It continues to impact 17% of our residents who took our survey. They said that they had more than seven, seven-plus more days of poor mental health in a month. On the average, we had 5.5 individuals, we had our residents say they had on average 5.5 poor mental health days in a month. And that's higher when we look at our state average of 5.0 days a month and the national average of 5.2 days a month. Mental health was a priority in our community health assessment in 2013, 2016, and 2022. So what do our next steps look like when it comes to addressing these health priorities? We will conduct a 2026 Community Health Improvement Plan, also called a CHIP. This is a plan that's put together where our Burke Wellness Initiative and the Health Department and multiple partners throughout Burke County will look at these priorities and look at what initiatives do we already have in Burke County that can be addressed, promoted, grants put forward to help address these health priorities. And then we will also conduct a 2027 State and County Health Report, which is another report in that three-year cycle that will update the Community Health Improvement Plan. We'll look at how are these programs improving these health priorities, what new initiatives have happened in Burke County, has there been any major environmental issues that have impacted our community as well? And that's all.
All right. Thank you, Miranda. Any questions for Miranda concerning our Community Health Assessment? All right, seeing here none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the 2025 Community Health Assessment Report as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2025 Community Health Assessment Report as presented. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Stroud. All those in favor signify with the uplifted hand. Five Zs. Miranda, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for all your work on this report, and we look forward to the finished products as they come along. Thank you very much. Item number seven, also coming from our county manager's office tonight, FEMA Public Assistance Process Update. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we walked through this extensively at your pre-agenda meeting a couple of weeks ago, but I will potentially, I had a couple of slides to just report to the board as we continue to work through our public assistance application. As I reported a couple of weeks ago, and as a reminder, Burke County's applied for a little over $11.4 million in public assistance reimbursement. This has been something we continue to work on every single day. There were several meetings last week, the week before, as well with FEMA attorneys. We also continue to communicate with state legislators and state emergency management personnel. To date, we've been reimbursed of category F and G, so we've received out of our $11.4 roughly million, $12,000 in reimbursement in the category A, category B components continue to be outstanding. Category B largely is represented by, it's called emergency operations, but it's largely staff time. So as we were working through the storm, any time that professional staff went, spent working on the storm, went into this category. And category A primarily was both private and commercial right-of-way debris, monitoring, collection, and disposal. I won't walk all the way through this because we covered it in detail a couple of weeks ago, but this is an effort to demonstrate maybe the lack of fluidity or maybe the alternative is the absolute fluidity that is the FEMA Public Assistance Process. I feel like our staff has really delved into the public assistance process as deeply as anyone who would be doing this largely for the first time. We're very thankful that we haven't had to practice in this area before. But there's a policy manual put out by the federal government and the Federal Emergency Management Association that most often is referred to as the Papa G. It's about 400 to 500 pages, and it is the owner's manual, if you will, to walk through the completion of this process. It's changed, I think, three times as we've, over the last 14 and a half months roughly that we've navigated through this storm. Things that were not allowable became allowable, things that were allowable changed how those were to be measured. And it has been a really difficult process to explain or to follow, other than getting new information as it kind of comes. We are thankful to Congressman Moore's office. They've been very helpful in answering questions and tracking things down, and as well as the State Department of Emergency Management has tried to answer questions and advise where possible. But I would say one of the most challenging things is FEMA appoints what's called a local PDMG, and it's kind of the local project management official from FEMA to help you interpret and advocate on your behalf as the application moves through the process. We've changed that multiple, multiple times. It's kind of a rotating door as we've moved through, which makes information and consistency and advisement very challenging. You can see, and again, we talked about it last time, so I won't dive into too much detail, Mr. Chairman, unless there's questions from the board, but we followed the state procurement process. So back in 2019, the state of North Carolina Department of Emergency Management went through a public procurement selection process where they pre-selected both the monitoring and the collection firm so that when these types of emergencies happen and there's a declaration, counties and local governments can engage in those services quickly without having to go through a, you know, an advertisement, a selection process, because obviously in an emergency situation, you need to be able to move very swiftly. I mentioned the roughly $11 million, and this is just working through category A, a part that was our application, the first six months of the The first six months as a reminder was covered 100% via presidential declaration by the federal government. After six months, March 28, 2025, that converted to the typical 90% for a level-one declaration. And then you can just kind of follow through the different levels of approval that each comes with a, and a, let's just call it a very significant and a very intense amount of application and questions and review until you get to this, this really, this large project review, which followed four levels, both legal and environmental and archaeological and financial review. We were the first county, as far as I know, in Western North Carolina to get to this large project review, which is the last stage before FEMA obligates the money. They send it to the State of North Carolina and then ultimately to the county. And at this level, again, to my understanding, for the first time ever in a storm of this nature, FEMA decided that debris trailers could not be 90% full. And so our application was kicked all the way back down to this level over while they, while they worked that out. And as a reminder, the monitoring company for Burke County was Debris Tech. Codes as debris is coming into these temporary staging sites, the quantity of the material that's being handled. And so that's kind of where we are. We've had a couple of meetings over the last two weeks, excuse me, but no significant movement in our application. Excuse me, I apologize. So, so again, still trying to work through that. I mean, I think that we've done all that we can do until we get a little bit, a little bit of clarification, and that's primarily between the attorneys for FEMA and the attorneys with Debris Tech, the monitoring agency. I do know that there were some counties in North Carolina that FEMA offered a settlement for the percentage of utilization inside of these trailers, and that seemed to us to be a cost-reduction strategy by the federal government. And we've been advised to not, at this time, and obviously we would come to the board with any situation of that nature, but we've been advised to not take those, those types of negotiated agreements. And we're optimistic that 90% conversation is going to be worked through. So the short story is, we're, we're still chugging right along. We've been reimbursed about $12,000 of a little over $11.4 million, and we'll keep you all informed as we move along. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any questions on this item? Seeing here none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm on a roll. I'll make a motion to accept the report as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Trout, all those in favor signify the uplift in hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Brings us to item number seven, scheduled public hearing tonight. We have one hearing. This comes from our zoning, our community development zoning map amendment ZMA 2025-06, and this will be presented by Patrick Dickinson, our planner. Good evening, Patrick.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening to the board. So tonight I'm going to be presenting ZMA 2025-06. The applicant is Country Squire Leasing LLC. This is located at 2893 US 70 in Conley Springs, and the applicant is requesting a rezoning from residential two to general business. That, that general area, I had some slides, I'm not sure. Oh, there we go. Thank you. So this general area around here is considered pretty mixed-use in terms of planners. As you can see here, we have a variety of different uses. Behind the site, you can see the Kramer Lumber Mill is back there. You have a variety of different uses, such as a gas station, service repair station, and single-family homes in this existing area. The parcel that is in question here has an existing commercial tractor-trailer repair structure on there, so they are looking to rezone it to be able to possibly use that again. The parcel is accessed via US 70, and it's located within the Eiker Township and its fire district as well. Here's some site photos. There is the building in front of the white car. That is the existing structure there. You can kind of see from the rest of the photos that this is a pretty mixed-used area with a variety of uses. That single-family home is across the street, and that gas station and other uses around. So for our current zoning, it's currently zoned R2. R2 is a, is our, kind of our medium tier of our residential zoning that allows single-family homes, modular homes, and double-wide trailers, and a few other community assets. The proposed zoning of general business is established to provide the suitable locations for commercial activities. In the general business zoning district, it allows most retail, entertainment, and service uses. Some of the more extensive uses, such as kennels, exterminators, and special event grounds, would require a special use permit in that zoning. It also allows a few industry and agricultural uses, such as distilleries, mini warehouses, and greenhouses are some of those uses that would be allowed there. And then this is our future land use map. These are basically our, kind of a part of our Blueprint Burke Comprehensive Plan. This is what we envision these parcels to be used for in the future. As you can see, right now, it's designated as residential infill. If this is to pass tonight, that would be switched to the general business future land use designation. And while this is not consistent with the future land use plan, this is consistent with the Burke County Blueprint Plan to promote residential, I'm sorry, commercial use and growth along our major highways in Burke County. Sorry. I had one other slide, but our staff findings found that this was reasonable in the public interest due to that surrounding use of mixes on that US 70 corridor. And while that's not consistent with the Blueprint Burke Strategic Plan, it is consistent with the commissioner's goals to promote economic development along highway corridors with access to utilities and state-maintained roads. At the planning board meeting on September 25, no one spoke during the public comment period, and the planning board voted 6-0 to support the request, and there was no further public comments that were heard by the department. And if y'all have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer those now.
All right. Thank you, Patrick. Any questions for Patrick on this item before I open the public hearing? Seeing here none, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Do we have anyone here tonight to speak to this item? All right. Seeing a hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-12 as it relates to ZMA 2025-06 to rezone the parcel at 2893 US 70, Conley Springs, North Carolina, pin 2772-35-7468, from residential two, R2, to GB, general business, and to adjust the future land use map to general business for this parcel. This request is reasonable and in the public interest as it aligns with the surrounding commercial and mixed-use character of US 70 and is supported by the Blueprint Burke Land Use Plan, which encourages commercial development along Burke County's highway corridors.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Barry. You've heard the motion. All those in favor signify the uplift in hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk.
Thank you very much, Patrick.
This brings us to item number eight, informal public comments tonight. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody for the public comments?
No, sir.
Was that a no?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Item number nine, then, that brings us on to the consent agenda, and I'll ask the County Manager to review our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple items for consideration, all again were presented at your pre-agenda meeting two weeks ago. The first one is the financial report for the second, for the end of the second quarter, June 30, 2025, for Burke County Public Schools and for Q3, September 30, 2025. Item two was reappointments to the Adult Care and Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. That would be seats 1, 3, 4, and 13, all reappointments. Item three, also from our clerk's office, appointments and reappointments to seats number one and six to the Council on Aging. Item number four, also a reappointment from the clerk's office to the East Burke Senior Center for Seat Number Three. Item number five is removal and an appointment for Seat 11, which is media for the local area of Planning Commission, Emergency Management Planning Commission, excuse me. Item six is consideration of budget amendment number four on the year for $18,500. $16,000 of that would be donations from the United Way for the Hurricane Lee recovery event, and the other $2,500 was from Walmart donations. Item number seven is approval of minor policy revisions from the Office of State Human Resources for our substantial equivalency application. Would point out that the County Attorney's Office has reviewed those. And finally, for consideration, is the, both Q2 and Q3 financial report for Western Piedmont Community College. Happy to answer any questions that you may have on this.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing here none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. All those in favor signify the uplift in hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. All right, gentlemen, that brings us to item number 10, items for decision. Several items for decision tonight. Gentlemen, we've been going a while. Everybody okay, or do we need a brief break?
Good.
Everybody good?
Bravo.
All right. First item on the decision agenda is from our TDA, Presentation of Financial Update. We'll hear from our Tourism Development CEO, Ed Cooks. Good afternoon, Ed. Evening.
Good evening. This is one of the most productive commissioner meetings I think I've attended in a long time. You've had a lot going on tonight. So anyway, I'm Ed Phillips, CEO of the TDA, Tourism Development Authority. Before I get started, I'd also like to introduce two members of my team, Catherine Christie, who's the Director of Sales and Marketing, and Ashley Frye is here, also Director of Visitor Services, runs our visitor center here in Burke County. Through October 31 of this year, we've had 3,058 visitors. We've already beat 2024, the number of visitors we had through the year. We just completed October, and we had exactly 400 visitors in October this year. And I don't know if I have control of this, but I'll go ahead and have them forward the slide. There you go. So to talk a little bit about visitor spending, so from 2023 to 2024, visitor spending rose 11.9% to $154.26 million. We also saw the second highest growth in North Carolina percentage-wise in tourism-related or hospitality employees. So we're at right hundred, right now at 931, growing from 865. I will tell you, in the next 12 months, in hospitality and tourism jobs in Burke County, primarily in new restaurant jobs, we're going to grow over 300 employees in hospitality. The Olive Garden, which just opened, hired 150 employees for that one restaurant, and there's going to be more coming onboard. Payroll generated from the tourism industry was $32.8 million. State tax revenue here in Burke County, $5.86 million. And about $4.6 million in local taxes were generated from occupancy, sales, and property tax revenue from travel-related businesses. So this is a key part of economic development here in Burke County. The next slide, please. If I can, oh, there we go. 2024 visitor data. So this is very interesting now. We're able to track market analysis of Burke County and visitors that come to Burke County. What defines a visitor? How long they stay? And where they're from? So we had 2.2 million out of Burke County visitors, unique individuals, that came through here in 2024, for a total of 12.2 million visits. The average stay was five and a half days. Look at the top five states they came from. North Carolina's 1.6 million, South Carolina 141,000, Florida 88,000, Tennessee, and then Virginia. You can see those numbers. Of course, North Carolina is its own best market, and it always has been. Most of the people that visit here are North Carolinians. A little bit of a marketing update and some things that we've done. You can forward the next slide on that, too. We did a little update, a little twist on our logo. We've added a black border to it to make it stand out a little more. We also found out that people don't, outside of this region, don't know where Burke County is. So we put an NC there instead of 1777, which used to be the founding date of Burke County. That gives us a little more recognition as a North Carolina county. There are other Burke Counties. Georgia's one. So this makes us a little more unique and has been very well-received in our market. Looking at, this is our website, looking at some updates on our website, and we keep that updated. We are actually using artificial intelligence now to gather events, and it feeds them into our portal, where we then review those events and allow those to be posted on our website if they meet our criteria. Because you can imagine, there's thousands of events in this county every year and the region close by. To monitor that without artificial intelligence was very time-consuming, and now it does it for us. So it's been very helpful to have that. Next slide, and you can go ahead and move forward on that. This was a co-op. So every year, our state magazine and their mountain issue, which comes out in middle of September, and for many years now, we've done a four-page spread in there promoting all things in Burke County. The people you see, these are ads from the Community House, Toners Irish Pub. We have some from Bowdies on the next page, Community House. And these people pay to be in here. We underwrite the costs of this to make it more affordable for advertisers. And then we have people show up in our office, in the visitor center, going, hey, where is Paradise Class? Where is Little Guatemala? We also, by virtue of this ad, get a lot of inquiries from other journalists, other travel writers that read this and say, hey, that's a unique little place there, Little Guatemala. We'd like to come and do a story on it. So it just, one thing generates more, and it just multiplies that. The Grand Canyon of the East, you can see that, Autumn Unleashed, Bowdies, and the Swinging Bridge down there is very unique. Patterson's Amish Furniture. We have several destination retailers in Burke County, and that is a business that is located here where most of their customers are from out of town. Patterson's is one of those. Brings in hundreds and hundreds of people every month to come and shop there. So a very interesting, interesting place. How do we get all this publicity for Burke County? Catherine goes out and does what we call a pitch, where we pitch an idea or a story to marketplaces in Raleigh. She's also been to Atlanta and Washington DC, meeting with journalists and magazines and publishers. We've also hosted in-market here in Burke County, NC Weekend on PBS North Carolina. Deborah Holt Noel loves Burke County. She's been here many times. NC Tripping, Queen City Exclusive, Discover the Carolinas, and also the Raleigh Local. We have hosted all of those editorial staff here in Burke County in the last year that are interested in writing about Burke County. So I want to say thank you to that. We do have some financials to share with you as well, and I'd like to go over that with you for the end of our fiscal year, which was July 1, 24 through June 30, 2025. Of course, we had a lot of recovery workers here towards the end of the year, October, November, December, and even into the early spring. And so we actually collected, actually, she's looking at the balance sheet first, but our balance sheet at the end, June 30, was First Citizens Bank and the capital management account are basically our savings account, and then some accounts receivable tied to occupancy tax for a total checking, total assets of one, a little over a million, $1.074 million. And then you can see the payables and a few liabilities down through there. If you go to the next page, this was the end of September of this year. This is our current fiscal year, so July 1 through September, and you can see our balance as of September 30, $905,188. And I think there's another report possibly. See if you can pull that up. Or maybe not. Maybe not. However, I do want to tell you, as far as the occupancy tax collected in the last fiscal year, which ended June 30, it was actually $1.2 million, and that's a new record for Burke County. Part of that was the recovery workers who were here, October, November, December, January, February through March. They were here about six months. That has declined somewhat now. We still see strong patterns of visitation here, even after the recovery workers left. So the summer and the fall seasons have been very strong. Looking towards the future, in the next 12 to 18 months, we have a Home Two Suites Hotel that's going to start construction here in Morganton up behind Longhorn. We also know there are other hotels in the region going to start construction. There's another Fairfield Inn and Suites in Marion, and possibly another Hilton property in Lenore. So these hotel operators see strong and growing demand for rooms still in this foothills region, including Burke County. So we So, we have a strong economy in tourism. It's not slowing down. The lean pushed us a little bit back, but we recovered, and now we're growing. So, that's my report, and I entertain any questions or comments.
All right, thank you, Ed. Gentlemen, any questions for Ed on his report tonight? Great report. Things are looking good. Now, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the report as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. All those in favor signify by the up lift at hand. Five to zero. Item number two comes from our clerk tonight, reappointment to the Foothills Regional Airport Authority, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Burke County appoints two members to the Foothills Regional Airport Authority for two-year terms. Seat number one is occupied by Commissioner Burns. Seat number two, an at-large seat, is occupied by Thomas Fraley. His term has ended, and he is willing to serve another term. We do have three applications on file for this seat. So, the three are Thomas Fraley, Ed Halliburton, and Tim Newton.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. As Madam Clerk indicated, Mr. Burns is on this board, and we have one at-large seat that is currently filled by Thomas Fraley. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to for nominations for this seat.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Tommy Fraley.
Okay, we have nomination for Mr. Fraley. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, I'll close nominations. All those in favor of seating Mr. Fraley back into that seat, indicated by the up lift at hand, I'll make that motion, and there we go, five to zero, Madam Clerk. All right, item number three was a new item that made you aware of earlier. This is appointments to the Tax Revaluation Task Force. We have two seats. The first seat, we have applicant Brian Smith. I guess, Madam Clerk, I'll let you tell us all about it.
You're doing a fine job, Mr. Chairman. In July, the Board adopted Resolution Number 2025-21, creating the Revaluation Task Force. It's a seven-member Citizen Advisory Board, charged with promoting transparency, enhancing public understanding, and providing community input throughout the 2027 countywide property revaluation process. You fill five seats in September. We still need to fill two seats. One is Seat Two, which is, represents an active licensed general contractor. And Seat Number Six represents an at-large community member. You have three applications on file. Jim Belote, who I've categorized as an at-large applicant. Damian Patton, also an at-large, and Mr. Brian Smith, who is a general contractor. The term ends January 1, 2027.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Gentlemen, you've heard this information. We do have one general contractor who has an application. It would seem prudent to me that we would appoint him to Seat Number Two, since we're looking for a general contractor. I would entertain that motion, or any other motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Brian Smith to the Revaluation Task Force, Seat Number Two, Active Licensed General Contractor, to complete the remainder of a term ending January 1, 2027.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. All those in favor signify by the up lift at hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. That leaves us with Seat Number Six. We have two applicants, Mr. Jim Belote and Damian Patton. Open floor for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate Jim Belote for Seat Number Six to the Reevaluation Task Force at Large, to complete the remainder of a term ending 1 January 2027.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We have a nomination for Jim Belote. Any other nominations? Seeing here none. All those in favor of seating Mr. Belote to Seat Number Six on the Task, Reevaluation Task Force, signify by the up lift at hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. All right. Fourth item on Decision Agenda comes from Finance, Consideration of the COPS Grant and Budget Amendment Number Five. And we'll hear from Lindsay Stottman, our Senior Fiscal Analyst. Evening, Lindsay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. Hope y'all are well. I'm here to talk to you about an exciting new opportunity that we have that's come about with us in the public school system. So, let's click forward. Before I do click forward, I don't believe they're present, but just to put it on the record, if it wasn't for Mr. Keith Lawson and Dr. Dylan Sane with Burke County Public Schools, this would not have been an opportunity for us to pursue. So, I just don't believe they're here with us tonight. But I do just want to recognize them publicly, that they were instrumental in us helping get us this grant between the two of us. So, just a little bit of background we're going to talk about in just a moment, about the grant, and actually what it is and how it came about. We're going to talk a little bit about the actual grant terms and the amount of money that we're going to receive, and what's expected of us in terms of money, the strategy of how we're going to spend that money, and then any questions that you might have. So, this grant came about in 2018. It was passed by Congress as the Stop School Violence Act. It's a very competitive grant process, and what I'd like to pull your attention to is that last little paragraph that says, "This application and award process is rigorous." For example, in 2024, the COPS Office received over 1,000 applications, requesting over $333 million, yet they only had about $73 million worth of funding to award. So, it's a very selective process in the grantees that they actually do give funding to. So, the grant itself, yes, the grant itself, the total project cost, and we're going to talk about what those projects are in just a moment, but the total cost of all the projects that us, Burke County, and the school system want to do is going to cost a total of $624,991. What is not on this slide is how much money we are actually going to get. And we are actually going to get a total of, I have it number here, $468,743. Now, that is the 624 minus our 25% match. Our 25% match is $156,248. I know that sounds like a big number, and that can be scary. But our public school system is going to give up $116,248 cash, and Wee Burke County are going to put in $40,000 cash. Now, that total will give us the 156,248 that we need for our match of our 25%. These numbers come from the projects I'm about to tell you about. Wee Burke County would like to do one project with this grant, with the money, whereas the school system would like to do multiple. So, when we did those figures, it came out that they would need to put in more money than we did. Also, this is a three-year federal grant program, if you didn't know that. So, what do we want to do with this money? Well, Wee Burke County would like to improve the safety and help our students in our schools out at Reef Park. There is still one field that is not completely lit. We have lit some other fields, but there's one field that's not lit, so we would like to finish that. And that's the only project we really want to put in for, which is why we only have to put up the $40,000. Now, the schools have a lot of really great ideas. They want to put in some metal detectors, some portable ones for the athletic events. They want to do some additional cameras, possible even bus cameras. And they want to add the card access, kind of like all the badges that we have. They want to do that for their staff and teachers as well. And those are just some of the ideas that they have. When I last spoke with Dr. Sane, he wanted to start at the high schools and then work their way down until they run out of money, out of the three years. So, that's kind of the priorities that they have. And that's all we have. Now, any questions? Or comments or complaints?
Thank you, Lindsay. Any questions? We're not going to take complaints, but any questions?
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
So, looking at what you're going to spend money, doesn't look like you're going to create positions?
No.
Okay.
This is not for positions. It's solely for, it's school violence prevention, safety. So, it's all for safety measures.
Okay. I know we had a grant in the past that created several FTE. Then, when the grant expired, it led to some hard decisions to make.
Sure. Yeah, not at this time. We have written another grant, which we did just hear about. We did not receive to get some student resource officers. We did not, unfortunately, get that grant this year. We'll try again for that in the future, but this will not be for positions. Great question.
Questions?
I just have one question. I don't know if you know this, but have any idea what the lighting, like the total cost of the lighting is at Reef Park?
So, we paid for it in the past. It's about $160. So, Treg was here, and in the past, he had gotten some quotes, and we got another quote from the same gentleman, just for numbers-wise, and it was about $160, because we already have the box out there from the last time we lit it, so it was going to be a little bit cheaper this time.
Okay, thanks.
I will say that I went by Reef Park for the first time on Johnson Bridge Road a couple of weeks ago, or last week, I guess it was, and I saw the lights that we have on. It's pretty impressive.
It is impressive, and I think we'll be able to do more once the other field is lit out there. I think that'll provide a lot more safety for everybody out there. So, that'd be great.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, that field lighting was something that the county was setting aside money over time for. So, the $40,000, the total cost, the total estimated cost, we hadn't gone through a formal bidding process yet, but the estimated cost was $160,000. And there, as part of our out-year capital, we had began planning for that. And the $40,000 match would not require any additional appropriation by this board.
Other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number Five in the amount of $624,991, and authorize the Deputy County Manager/Finance Director to execute the grant documents on behalf of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All those in favor signify by the up lift at hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Item number five comes from Tax Collection, Tax Department. This will be presented by Dawn Hutchins. There's Dawn. October 2025.
These numbers, I think John presented them to you pre-agenda. But our current year taxes, we've collected $39,601,197.43. Our delinquents, we're actually a little ahead, $384,338. Penalties and interest is $114,213.85. And our year-to-date on our property taxes is the $37,477,843.82.
Thank you, Dawn. Any question on this report? Seeing here none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, real quickly, there was a number that had to be corrected. I just want to make sure before we vote, it was corrected.
It was corrected, yeah.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll make a motion to approve Tax Collection Report for October 2025 as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. All those in favor signify by the up lift at hand. Five to zero. Item number six, Tax Refund and Release Report, October 2025. And again, we're back to Mr. Burns' comment. I think this report had a funny number on it, and I think that's why it came back to us again tonight. So, Dawn, we'll hear from you.
Okay, on the tax system, the net releases are $11,592.59. And then, we refunded of that $2,324.62. And on the vehicle system, the refund is $209.33.
Any questions on this item? Seeing here none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the tax releases and refunds for October 2025 as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All those in favor signify by the up lift at hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Dawn, for being here tonight. Brings us to item number 11, Reports and Comments. We have several reports tonight. The first one comes from Animal Services. This will be presented by Caitlin Settemeyer, our Animal Services Director. Evening, Caitlin.
Good evening. Emotional evening. So, excited to share a departmental update from Animal Services. We do fall into the focus areas of public safety and well-being. That's kind of our main focus, but we also feel like we do fit in in community advancement as well. So, why do we do what we do at Animal Services? So, our mission at Burke County is improving lives in Burke County. So, how do we bring that down to Animal Services? Well, we have developed our own mission that aligns with our county, and it is to strengthen the human-animal bond by providing humane treatment of animals and people alike. We will achieve this by providing education and resources to the public, advocating for the sick and vulnerable, and providing both animals and people with kindness and a much more clear opportunity for life. So, we are doing that. With every program that we put in place, every decision that we make, we do make sure that we are focusing on this mission. And that just kind of helps us, it helps guide where we need to go with our services. So, why does Animal Services exist? Mainly, it came about for public safety concerns. You know, we are, we want to make sure that we have, we don't want loose aggressive animals running up and down the road. It's also been established for public health, so we want to make sure that we're maintaining healthy animals in our community, making sure everybody's current on rabies vaccinations, including vaccinations such as parvovirus, because we want to keep other pets in our neighborhoods healthy as well. Community health and quality of life. Animals are a big part of our lives now, you know. Even in my lifetime, our dogs grew up outside, but now they're in sweaters, and they sleep in my bed and things like that. So, we've really brought animals into our homes, and people do expect that we treat our animals very well. Animal welfare, so we want to make sure that our animals do have a voice, making sure that they're being well-cared-for. We do investigate animal abuse, animal neglect, and things like that. And we also want to make sure that we have support for people. So, I know we've heard a lot about Hurricane Helene. You know, we were working in the background. We were extending our stray holds from three days to 30 days, and that created some really unique challenges with our current space. So, partnering with other organizations to complete these stray holds to make sure these people were getting their animals back was really important. So, all of that, we just put together a visual of Animal Services and what do we do. So, we focus a lot on community education and enforcement, and then we also have the shelter and adoption piece. Our annual budget is $960,000, and that comes out to about 90 cents per month, per person. And we do have a total of nine full-time employees that helps us do all of our functions. So, what is our impact goal? Our impact goal is to promote public safety and public health through being highly efficient. So, what does that look like for us? We get a lot of phone calls. We get a lot of calls for service. Our average annual call is about 40,000 a month. That turns out to be about 3,300 calls, and daily about 110 calls. So, this is a big need in our community. People are always reaching out, you know, whether it's an issue with animals, or whether they're looking to adopt, or things like that. So, this is pretty incredible. We didn't realize we did this much. So, being able to look at that data is really important. So, one of the things that we've been able to do with our county is to establish some key performance indicators. So, how are we measuring what we're doing, and is it effective for our community? So, some of those included tracking field return to owners, because that is how we can directly mitigate animals coming into the shelter, because we can save money if animals don't enter the shelter, if we need to just take them right back to where they belong. So, we have been tracking that and implementing some strategies to help with that. Community support, service utilization. So, what can we do to keep animals out of the shelter and keep them with their people? Because if we don't have to intake that animal, you know, it's going to be a better day for everybody. It's going to cost us less money, and the animal gets to stay with the family that loves them. Average length of stay, so if an animal does enter the shelter, what can we do to make sure that we're moving that animal through the shelter system quickly to get it to the best possible outcome? And then, we also are looking, starting to look at door counting. So, how many people are we serving? That's something that we do not know. We have a lot of people that walk through our doors, but I couldn't tell you really how many that is month-to-month. So, that's going to be interesting for us to be able to find out once we get a little bit more data on that. Just a quick snapshot at our intake and outcome for Animal Services. I think there's a little typo here. We do have 16 dog kennels, but with that, you can see our intake continues to go up. We are finding a lot of positive outcomes for these animals. So, 89% of the animals that leave our facility are leaving with a positive outcome, and 11% of those do not. So, what is that? So, we have been focusing on a lot of different programs. We are trying to be really proactive, but just kind of speaking to the animals that do have to end up in our care. We've been really focusing on getting these animals directly in foster care. So, that's going to reduce our average length of stay in the shelter, and it's cheaper to keep animals with families, and that's ultimately where we want them. So, you can see from our charts here, we have really been pushing people to foster under that foster care intake. So, these animals are coming in. We're asking people, hey, do you want to foster this animal? Because they brought it to our shelter. They care about this animal. They don't want to see anything that happen to it. And most of these people are like, yeah, we can do that. So, that has driven our onsite time for these animals staying in the shelter down. So, we can So, we can, we can help more animals coming into the shelter. It's really reduced our average length of stay. I think it's important to note that our shelter is absolutely crushing, crushing it on average length of stay. It's best practice if you can keep it under fourteen days, and we are, you know, sitting around six or seven days of these animals in the shelter. So, we're really working hard to make sure that we're moving these animals through our system. So, another thing that we look at, stray dogs by each month. So, how many stray dogs are coming into the shelter? How many of those dogs are we able to get back home without them even needing a shelter as a resource? And our customer services responses, we are seeing a lot of people reaching out, needing assistance each month, whether that's dog food, or just they have questions about containment. How can we help them with containment for their animals? A few things that have come from this is a program that we call Business Buddies. So, just talking about average length of stay a little bit, we partnered with local businesses for one month, and these businesses had the responsibility of coming. We would pair them with a dog, they would come and check these dogs out, and it was their job to get these dogs adopted. And these were dogs that, after we ran a gap analysis, we were able to see that our larger dogs were staying in our shelter a little bit longer. So, we had to implement something to try and get these dogs moved out. And these weren't bad dogs, they were just big dogs. And so, our, we had a lot of participation. I was really surprised. I expected maybe two or three businesses to sign up, but we had, we had eleven businesses. And with that, I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but we sent out twelve long-term dog residents. So, these are dogs that were maybe sitting in our shelter for about thirty days. Those are the ones that we were placing as candidates. And like I said, these were amazing dogs, and they found their forever home. So, we look at, we look forward to being able to do that again. That was a really fun time, and I think our businesses had a lot of fun with it as well. We did partner, just, we partnered with our GIS team here in Burke County, and we were able to get these really beautiful maps. So, this is a heat map showing total stray animal intakes, and we can kind of dive down deep and see where the majority of our strays are coming from, and it's actually the City of Morganton. I was a little surprised to find that as well. So, we dug a little bit deeper into our data, and we also found that City of Morganton also had the highest return to owner rate out of all these other places we were getting stray animals. So, we were like, okay, well, these animals are coming in, and they're going back home. How can we keep that from, why do they need us? Like, how can we keep them out of the shelter? So, one of the things that we've been able to do, we're partnering with the Public Library. We're actually installing microchip scanning stations and hosting a free microchip clinic for pets in our community. So, that's going to take place in December, and that's going to be, we're hoping, you know, that'll help keep these animals out of the shelter. You can go to these chip scanning stations, if you find a stray animal, scan it and return it back home quickly. Another thing that we looked at with our GIS folks is total number of owner surrenders. So, where are our owner surrenders coming from? We have a pretty big hotspot over here near Hickory. So, you know, we have put some of our animal control officers, we've taken some shelter staff, and we've actually went out to this community to see what resources we can offer them. And that's just started in September, so hopefully I can be able to show a little bit more data a little later on to see if that's been impactful, if we're still having a lot of owner surrenders in that area. But it's been, these maps have been super helpful. We do plan to visit some of these other sites that we see as hotspot areas to see if we can get resources in those communities to keep these pets with their people. So, like I mentioned, reunification efforts, we do focus on free ride homes, getting these animals back to their people. We've worked a lot with GIS recently, our GIS staff here in Burke County. They have actually created us an interactive map, a lost and found map, where pet, or citizens can get on there, they can report their lost pets, they can report their found pets, and it puts it on a map. So, then they can go in, if you've lost a pet, you can see if somebody has found it. We also upload animals on there that we find in the community. So, we're hoping to get everybody on this GIS site so we can, you know, further get these, get these animals back home with their people. One of the things that animal enforcement has been doing, they've been doing a really good job with their mapping. You can see these priority ones, so these P ones, these bright red ones, those are like your emergency calls. So, these are dangerous animals, these are injured animals. And with that, typically what we see, like we said, kind of over near Hickory, we see a lot of these priority ones. We have a lot of owner surrenders over there. So, we know that we need to place a lot of resources in that area just to see if we can help reduce some of these numbers of calls. So, that leads us, I think I've hit this just a little bit, our community outreach and field support. So, we started, tried to pilot this program in September where we drew up these maps. We've been going out to a few different communities, seeing what resources we can provide. And so far, we've assisted twelve families, and they have a hundred, and a hundred and twenty-two animals total have been able to keep out of the shelter. We see these animals as possible surrender risk. One of the things we did want to touch on, our new animal shelter is coming along very nicely. We're super excited about that. We have been training for that. I think it's much like a ballgame, the big show is coming up, and we have to practice, practice, practice. So, we have these large floor plans that we get out at every staff meeting, and I meant to put some pictures in here, because my staff had a really great time with it, but we give scenarios, and it's how do, how are we going to do all this? You know, we have a small shelter now, we can just yell at each other for the most part, but now we're talking about, you know, we need to start working with walkie-talkies. We're going to need walkie-talkies at this new shelter. So, getting them involved in this change management has been really important. We are revising our SOPs to kind of be reflective of what we want to be doing in the new shelter, and we're trying to mitigate some of these changes that we can now, so that way whenever we move over to this new shelter, it will be smooth. So, we are excited about that. I did include a few photos. This changes like hourly. If you guys haven't been over there, I feel like every, if I go over there one hour and come back, there's like something new. So, there are animal cages going in now, the floors are all done, there's paint on the wall, it looks great. So, I would encourage, if you have time, to go up there and look around. We're very excited about that. I did want to highlight our, one of our front desk staff, Ms. Katie. She actually won Shelter Personnel of the Year, and I thought that was a really wonderful award for a front desk to win. She is so instrumental in making sure that we are, our operations are running smoothly, so she's done a great job, and she deserves that. We do have a few challenges. Our current facility, I think as we all know, is pretty poor. We don't even have a dedicated cat room. So, the space that we have, just, it isn't efficient for the operations we're trying to run, but we do the very best we can with what we've got. There has been an increased community need for outreach and support. I don't know if it's necessarily an increased community need, or if the need's always been there, that people are just now feeling comfortable enough to start reaching out about their needs. So, they know that we're, we're not just the bad guys, we're there to help and support. Managing large-scale intakes, like I had mentioned, we helped twelve families with a hundred and twenty-two animals. That's about ten animals a property, so some of these properties can have quite a few animals on them. So, and sometimes the only resource we have is to bring these animals into the shelter because they just have too many animals. So, managing some large-scale intakes has been challenging, but we're doing a really good job with it. And then balancing enforcement and education. So, when is a good time to enforce, and when is a good time to educate? That is, that's something that we're really trying to focus on, and it can get complex sometimes. So, we would like to do a quick call to action. It takes a whole entire community care, so if you can just, you know, try to tell your friends what we're doing, ask, encourage them to reach out if they have issues. It's going to take all of us to have a safe and healthy community. And that's all I have, is my update. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, Caitlin, thank you very much. Gentlemen, any questions for Caitlin tonight?
Mr. Chair, I want to thank you for the work you do. I know animals are very important to a lot of people in Burke County, and the cost to each taxpayer is minimal for the things that you do that private citizens probably wouldn't want to pay for if they had to foot the whole bill out of there, probably like a rabid animal or something like that. But I think I read, studied one time, a couple of years ago, it costs the average taxpayer here like seven or eight dollars. The manager can correct me on that, seven or eight dollars a year, that's, that's pretty good. I appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions, comments? All right, see you here and none, entertain a motion to accept this report.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the report as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. All those in favor signify on the up fifty to ten. Thank you very much. Five to zero. Caitlin, thank you for being here. Item number two on Reports Tonight comes from our County Manager's Office and the opioid remediation strategy update. This will be presented tonight by Katie Samuels. Katie, good evening.
There we go. Good evening. So, I am going to quickly give you a review of our annual impact report that was submitted in September in partnership with Margaret, our Finance Director. So, there were two parts to the impact report, a financial report, which was submitted by Margaret, and an impact report. And the impact report went through the things that we funded, what we allocated opioid settlement money for and actually spent the money on. So, if we had a strategy that we allocated money, but we didn't necessarily spend it in that fiscal year, it wouldn't be included in the annual report. So, these are all things that we have done over the last year. And some highlights here are establishing an independent opioid settlement department, distributing over a thousand naloxone kits, launching countywide education and engagement campaigns, coordinating our peers partnering for excellence, or PPE group. We developed a videography project, and we sustained and expanded recovery court in fiscal year twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five. So, a big part of what we do is including people with lived experience. So, the, in the last year, through our strategic planning meetings, peers partnering for excellence, and naloxone training, we engaged three hundred and fifteen unique individuals in this process, and thirty-four percent of those individuals reporting have, reported having lived experience in mental health substance use, or taking care of a loved one with either of those things. Burke County Recovery Court reported fifteen participants served in the year, over fifteen-hundred staff contacts with these individuals, a hundred percent referral and linkage to treatment, eighty-six percent treatment adherence after six months, seventy-three percent housing retention, and a hundred percent received naloxone kits. Our current strategies are, our current county-led strategies are naloxone distribution, and we have begun purchasing naloxone under this strategy. We've actually found a new distributor where we can purchase at twenty-two dollars a box, which is significantly less than what we were able to get it for before. Our community navigator, she actually started last week, so we're super excited to have her onboard. Her name's Lee Gant, and she's a certified peer support specialist. Our port team, actually, as of today, while I'm kind of like low energy, I spent all my energy this morning welcoming two of our peer support specialists for the port team. Welcoming them onboard, Matt Hare and Mary Jo Silver. And I think some of you guys have seen them speak and know a little bit about their story, and they really hit the ground running, they're on, on fire for what we're doing here. Our provider-led strategies are Spark, Family Center Treatment-Recovery. They have hired three of their five staff, or they're fully staffed, and three of the five staff have completed the training, ongoing training in substance use and recovery. They've received five referrals this month and are actively engaging with DSS to start looking at the impact on the foster care population. A caring alternative are, they're in the process of going through their documentation for their site licensure and hiring staff there, and that is for SAICOT and SAIP, which is our day treatment programs for substance use. High Country Community Health is also actively receiving referrals from our current community paramedic, and we're continuing to grow that relationship as, as we're building it, we're including them in the processes so that we have a very smooth referral pathway of getting people connected through the port team and then engaged in treatment. All three of the providers have drawn down their startup funding and are well on their way to full implementation. And so, our next opioid advisory committee meeting is tomorrow, November eighteenth, and we will, we will review the next round of proposals, and they will go into more of an in-depth review at our January meeting, at which time they'll make some recommendations to bring that back before you. And that's all. If you guys have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Katie. Any questions for Katie on her report tonight? See you here and none, all entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the report as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. All those in favor signify on the up fifty to ten. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. This brings us to item number three on Reports Tonight, Health Quarterly Operational Report for the period ending September thirty, twenty twenty-five. This will be presented by our Health Director, Danny Sclis. Evening, Danny.
Good evening, gentlemen. I realize I'm the last thing. Somebody's moving that for me. There we go. This is for the first quarter fiscal year, which is July first until September thirtieth. A couple of the highlights that are there, we did finalize the community health assessment that you heard about tonight. Our EPI team was launched, and we received a training from the state in order to meet with the new requirements that are there for that. We welcomed four new members to our team. Our WIC team completed a number of new applications and recorded two thousand, three hundred and ten kept appointments. Our entire team had to go through FEMA training again, even if you, I had mine many, many years ago. But FEMA changed a lot of the ICS training that public health officials had to go through. So, a lot of our team had to go through that, as well as a couple of new trainings that they designed for us. So, we had a total of five hundred and ninety-nine patients. Our team had presentations at the North Carolina Public Health Association, the American Public Health Association, and published a paper in the Journal of Apoletian Health about the work that we were doing here, here in the county. And you can see there the number of septic applications that were held, and we're really proud that we've gotten that number for the septic applications down in terms of the time for the customers to have there. Our health education team was the one who did the community health assessment. They had the local review team and PIO training that they had to do. The local review team is what placed the child fatality review team. Commissioner Barry, you're very familiar with that. Participated in a couple of the local events where we do a lot of outreach. You can see there, they talked about Freedom High School and Burke United Christian Ministries Point in Time Count. Environmental health, we're really proud that we have, one of our young employees just got her onsite wastewater authorization. We've done new, eleven new restaurants in the quarter were permitted, and we're at thirty-five percent of the required food and lodging. That's twenty-five percent of the year, we're thirty-five percent through. So, we're a little ahead of the game, which has been a challenge over the last few years, but with the new FTEs that you added, we've been pretty good. Clinic and lab services, like we said, six, almost six hundred patients, we did about seventeen hundred tests in that serum time, and the students that have to get immunizations before they go to school, we held clinics for them to make sure that the parents could have those. We stayed after hours just to make it as convenient as we could possibly for them. We had forty students that came into our clinics for pre, preschool year immunizations. Our care management, our WIC unit, the caseloads for our care management team continue to grow. That's dealing with young moms and the babies through Medicaid. We are showing positive outcomes for people who graduate out of those programs. Our WIC team maintained a very strong performance. They were, they, four percent passed their goal, and our breastfeeding peer counselors have a hundred and thirty-five contacts with families, which we know is going to have greater outcomes later on in life for those. Two of our employees won awards at the North Carolina Public Health Association Conference, including Jackson Stump, who's one of our environmental health specialists, was North Carolina's Environmental Health Specialist of the Year. We had a couple others that gave presentations, spoke briefly about our staff paper that was there. We worked with a grant that we had last year with North Carolina State University's Extension Service to develop lean training over the last year. Lean's a process that was originally started with the Toyota manufacturing to eliminate waste in the manufacturing process. It's since been adapted into government and healthcare. NC State has an expert in government and healthcare, and they came and gave trainings to our teams. It started with one group, and then they had a smaller group that did a higher level training. We also had a couple folks from Social Services and HR that joined us with those. We've been using those processes to try and shrink times that people need to wait for weather processes. We think we can get our environmental health times less than three weeks, maybe closer to two, which would be the best in the state, using those processes that we learned through that. We also took part in statewide emergency operations center drill, always trying to make sure that we are prepared. Once a year, we try to do it twice a year, but once a year we have to have an all-staff training day where we can meet all of the requirements that are necessary for a lot of the contracts that we have with the state. Staff FEMA training I mentioned earlier, and then we had a week-long preparedness training a couple of our staff did with North Carolina State Emergency Management Group. Are there any questions, gentlemen?
All right. Thank you, Danny. Any questions for Danny on his report tonight? All right, see you here and none, all entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the report as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All those in favor signify on the up fifty to ten. All those in favor signify the up lift in hand. Five to zero. Thank you very much, Danny. All right, item four, reports and comments, brings us to a few reminders. Let me express appreciation. It was mentioned earlier that Congressman Moore had been working to help us through some of the FEMA processes, but he's also helped us with some grant funding or secured some funding for our health and resource building renovation project, $3.18 million was announced this past week. We certainly appreciate his help on that project. Would remind you that county offices will be closed for Thanksgiving on November 27th and 28th. Also, on November 27th only, the landfill and convenience sites are closed in observance of Thanksgiving. So just remember, landfill and convenience sites closed on the 27th. December 1st, Burke Board of Commissioners pre-agenda meeting at 3:00. And a reminder that December 2nd, the Morxon Christmas Parade at 6:00 p.m. that evening, lineup will be at 5:30. So be in your parade best and ready to go. Then December 3rd, we do have a courthouse renovation ribbon cutting. This is invitation-only event because of the space and things that are going on in the courthouse, but if you are invited, be reminded of that at 4:00 on December 3rd for the ribbon cutting for the renovations at the courthouse. And then some internal reminders there for the Board of Commissioners Department heads' Christmas events on December 11th. Again, a reminder to our youth and other groups that might be interested in leading our pledge, we'd love for you to come and be a part of our meetings, opening our meetings with the pledge of allegiance. Okay, let's move on to vacancy announcements, Madam Clerk, number 12.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, we have the following opportunities for citizens to be involved in county boards and committees, the Adult Care and Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Burke County Public Health Advisory Board, Hickory Regional Planning Commission, Drexel Planning Board, ETJ Members and Alternate, Partners Health Management's Human Rights Committee, and we just filled the last seats on the revaluation task force.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. I would encourage all of our citizens who might be willing and able to serve on one of these committees to please consider doing so. You can contact our clerk, or you can find the application online at our website. This brings us to item number 13, closed session. Gentlemen, I do need to let you know that we do need a closed session tonight, and so I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential, and if needed, to discuss threatening pending litigation to preserve the attorney-client privilege to discuss economic development matters, to discuss contractual matters, land acquisition, to discuss personnel matters as authorized by NCGS 143, 318, 11A, 1, 3, 4, 5, and 6. I'll make that motion. All those in favor, signify the up lift in hand. That is all of us, Madam Clerk. No, I'm not going to repeat it. I'm going to give you five minutes, gentlemen, recess before we will convene in closed All right, we're calling ourselves back in session, all commissioners back in their We did take some action, or we didn't take action. We're going to take action now, and I'll entertain a motion from Mr. Burns.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the release or refund for late payment penalty to Morganton Lodging Associates for the month of August 2025.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard this motion. All those in favor signify the up lift in hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. All right. And I'll say, just because I didn't say it at the right time, perhaps, we did have a proper motion to come out of closed session if the board took action that we've just taken. So with that, I'll entertain-
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to let Mike Stroud adjourn us.
I'll make that motion because Mr. Brian Berry gets to read all the fun stuff, so I'll keep the simple five sentences to adjourn this meeting.
All right, gentlemen, defer to motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify the up lift in hand. Five to zero. Thank you very much.